We'd like to welcome everybody tonight. We have the Darlington City Council attended for November City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, November the 12th, 2024, six o'clock. I invite you to bow your head to the Lord and pray for us. Dear God, thank you for this day, the Lord, thank you for your blessing as you've done for us in giving us. We ask that you work with us tonight, the Lord, to honor and glorify you and everything that we say and do. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Your pledge, stand up the pledge of faith. My pledge, ladies, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, and with the faithful, objective, just as for all. All right, a minute for September the third, I think, Mr.?
Good afternoon.
I think you have some amended view of those still, correct?
Yes.
We'll work on that later, maybe again, October the nineteenth. If anybody's fine, we'll let her finish those up for October the nineteenth. Do you have approval for minutes for October the first, two thousand twenty-four, the Riker City Council meeting?
I'm going to approve October first, twenty twenty-four, Riker City Council meeting minutes.
Second.
Mr. Mellen? Mr. McCray? Mr. Backus? Mr. Seagull?
Hi.
Mrs. Carey? Thank you. Do you have approval for the amendments of October the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, the Darlington City Council Planning Commission Workshop?
I'm going to commission to approve October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, Darlington City Council slash Planning Commission Workshop.
I'll slide. Mr. McCray? Three. Seagull? Mrs. Carey? Thank you. All right, citizens, question to approval before council, remember you have five minutes. I think it's Tanya Bailey?
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Tanya Bailey. I live on F Avenue in the city of Darlington. It started about a year ago, I started having issues with my plumbing backing up in my house. I've called plumbers, they came, they did their due diligence. They were paid, I know I must have called them at least four times. Then I said, well, it gotta be a different problem. So I had them to come, and they said, well, you're not tapped into the city. I said, what do you mean, I'm not tapped into the city? Because I pay sewer every month. So I hired an excavator to come dig up. He dug eight feet down and still did not find any tap or anything for me to put the lines into it. So several occasions, I've called the city water department to come out and tell me where the tap is. Nobody can locate the tap. So if I'm paying for sewer, somebody should be able to tell me where my tap is. And I shouldn't have to call a plumber every four months, pay him a hundred and fifty dollars to come and blow my system out. So I came up today, I was supposed to get a call back from Mr. Schubert. I have not received a call back from him as of yet. And I must have come up to the water department probably around eleven o'clock today. And I still have not received anything. I don't know anything, still don't know where anything is. Not if my, the sewer, the manhole says four feet down and they dug eight feet down. Where is it? And I just need some feedback so I know exactly what to do going forward.
What was your address?
One eleven F Avenue.
All right, we'll get a tech here.
Thank you very much.
You're letting us know. All right, Sean Loeb?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Sean.
When I came to council meeting today, I received a paper about a purchase of land from the club. And when I was reading this paper, it was saying about, this land wasn't even constructional. It flooded, it would have flood damage. It would call serious flooding. And I just have problems with our city funds going to this thing. If I'm not mistaken, twenty-five thousand dollars is going to this property. That's not even constructional. We have other needs. The lady just came up here talking about, there's a sewer problem issue. Let's put our money and stuff like that to the citizens, things that citizens need. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. All right, Gregory Hamlin?
Afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I am, my name is Gregory Hamlin. I live in the county, but I volunteer coaching basketball and football as Darlington Recreation Department. And I was given an anonymous letter from some parents with some complaints. And to start off, this is not a personal attack against anyone at the rate, but there are some issues that are going on. And we want some answers and some addresses, some things addressed. So the letter reads, "To our elected officials in the city of Darlington Recreation Department, we are writing this letter to make a statement that our children deserve better. Starting back to last football season, the red department has let our children and parents down. Example one, in two thousand twenty-three, the parents' All-Star hoodies did not come on time, so we didn't have hoodies for the games. No reason or apology was given. Example two, this football season, the uniforms were late again. As a result, the red council of jamboree with no makeup date name. Also, our children's uniforms were not wearable or suitable for some of our girls. The reason was the, the reason given that the director, Lee Andrews, the athletic director, Brett LaJette gave us, was that they tried a new vendor and once again, no apology was given. Example three, the red department didn't offer team pictures this season. Excuses that was given by the athletic director Brett LaJette was that the photograph photographer had a debt in the family with no makeup date. Once again, no apologies were given. Example four, All-Star uniforms and parent hoodies were not available for the first All-Star game this past Saturday. No reason and once again, no apologies given. Add to that, we weren't there for our second game this past Saturday, that was the Saturday before. And this Saturday, we didn't have it. But they did, the ones we ordered, but they did order us some replacements that we did wind up having to turn in. And also, I was given a sent a text from the red department today that they are refunding the parents for the recreation All-Star uniforms, but the hoodies they ordered, they won't have to come and get them. Example five, the athletic director Brett LaJette decided he would have a parent meeting and just completely bullied and blamed the parents for why the uniforms were not on time. Even told the parents, we could take our children to Florence if we had a problem. Once again, no apologies were given. Dear Darlington Recreation Department, our kids deserve better. Anytime you bring an issue to the red department, Director Lee Andrews or Brett LaJette, athletic director Brett LaJette, it is taken as a personal attack and become chaotic and most parents fear retaliation will be taken out on the children. This type of interaction has to stop. Again, this is not a personal attack towards any one person at the rate. We all know things happen. We just ask to be treated with respect, talked to proper. Don't harbor a grudge, not to be bullied, and to treat all children with fairness. Thank you concerning parents. Also let add, I've been coaching with the red department since nineteen ninety-four. I started with Wallace Bradley, and Bobby Cook was the athlete that red had been. And I'm kind of, I don't want to show it here, I know, I'm, I see the progress we have made, and, but I also see where we have been lacking and falling behind. Personally, I've had a lot of parents come to me to say they're taking their children to Florence or other areas to play versus bring them here to Darlington. Sports isn't the best thing for the kids to do, but it's something for the kids to do. And if we have those kids here, they have the talent that we can nurture and grow, that they may have an opportunity to develop themselves and their families. I would love to let them be here in Darlington. I have no specific answers for you, but we just need a better way forward. These kids, we're losing a lot of our kids to the streets, and I think the rate can help guide them back on the right path. Thank you for my time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service. Okay, Jane Lathan?
Evening, Council. At our last council meeting, I think we deferred discussion, and I see it showing up as whole business for the purchase of property on, in the country club for the sewer pump station. And I think the rationale for purchasing this right away was because it was required for grant funding. So my question tonight, and perhaps the public works director, I see he's on the agenda, can answer that for us? But my question is, has a grant been submitted? And so, has it been approved? And for how much? And what is the funding agency? My concern is that perhaps the council will move forward and purchase some land again, just like this mayor and some of the council members moved forward and spent approximately seven hundred thousand dollars of the citizens' money for a project that we didn't have all of approvals, even access a right away. So that land is still sitting vacant. The city's out of seven hundred thousand dollars, and nothing's been done. My concern is we move forward on some projects too quickly without appropriate due diligence. I'm not sure, I'm not aware of any major infrastructure grant that requires purchase, this type of purchase. What they require is that municipality actually only, but they don't require purchase before you submit the grant. So this might be some funding we can hold off on. Because another thing that happened at council meeting last month, we realized we didn't even have funding in the budget for a proposal that was being presented before the council to approve. So I think this responsibility is very critical. And we don't even have certain department heads. We used to have department heads giving updates on department budgets and activities. None of that is showing on the agenda tonight. We used to have the city manager giving us an update. Here are the key projects that we're working on. Here's the budget. Citizen has come before this council on numerous times, including myself, asking for a monthly update on finances in terms of revenue and expenditures, especially in the water and sewer department. There are still a number of issues that our citizens are having, while at the same time, we'll be in, our water and sewer rates continue to increase. I've come before this council a number of times, and I asked for a copy of our capital improvement plan. I was told that the capital improvement plan does not exist for the city of Darlington. This is almost inconceivable. And in my assessment, very irresponsible. Because citizens like myself are taxed three times each month for a capital improvement fee. That money is supposed to be going to implement a capital improvement plan. Yet we don't have a capital improvement plan. And citizens like myself come before this council, month after month after month. We make comments and apparently it's falling on deaf ears. So perhaps in council comments, where I see there's no council comments on the agenda for tonight, or perhaps someone can explain to me, what's the process? We come before council, we make comments. What's the process for responding back to citizens? There was an issue about some of the fire hydrants not working. That doesn't even show up on old business or new business. What is established? That's a life-threatening issue. My concern is that we really respond to citizens' issues and concerns. Otherwise, why waste our time? I appreciate everything that each of you do, and I hope you would take my comments seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. All right, during old business, I purchased a property for the country club for sewer pump station. I accidentally put Richard Sugar's name down there, I told him I would handle this. The property was appraised at, I think, thirty-five thousand dollars. He was asking twenty-five thousand dollars for it. We called him and talked with him, and the property owner told him to take twenty-two thousand for it. The purchase of the property will then give the opportunity to apply for the grants for the upgrade on that station. There is minor weapons on there, but Sheila Jones said there's no issue with upgrading or any issues with whatever we have to do for the pump station or if they turn into gravity feed for that property. Services, I think, are good for the state of the country.
My understanding is this will deal away with the pump station, which has been being run by a rental unit for years now. And it'll be turned into a gravity sewer oven?
This is going.
I mean, this is necessary, I'm asking. Yeah, I mean, it's necessary for, for the pump station to be there, right?
We're not developing, buying this property, building a house on my property, so we got a, or we got a station on that needs to be upgraded and the property can be able to do that, we need to own the property.
The gravity system is a lot cheaper than the old infrastructure for a new pump station. My understanding is the, the gravity line will take the sewage to a pump station that's right in another part of the neighborhood, and so we don't have to have two pump stations there. Just make it all one unit.
Six. The property owners in Wood Creek subdivision, which is below where this piece of property is, they've been contacting, we've tried to get an easement with them, so we looked at the person who purchased the property, and that was, that was not fruitful. It is more co-op breaker with some bad, so that kind of leads us into why we need to purchase this piece of property.
So let me ask a question. And I'm going to ask Ms. Lathan this question, since she do these grants. Explain to me, do we need to purchase this property before we apply for the grant?
I think a couple of questions needs to be answered, and apparently...
Mrs. Lathan is not the expert on this page right now, so I don't, Mrs. Lathan needs to speak on this. I appreciate it.
We're talking about getting a grant for the property. Only way we're going to be able to do this work is going to have to be a grant. Ms. Lathan is an expert on that. She writes grants. She actually gets grants.
Mrs. Lathan, has said hire by the city to give any advice?
I'm not hiring, I'm asking her a question. Ms. Lathan, I'm asking you a question. We don't have anybody qualified, but the city didn't even answer the question.
Most grants, infrastructure grants, depending on the agency, if you're getting a C D B G grant, right? Purchasing this property before you submit the grant would in fact be problematic and would in fact put securing that grant in jeopardy. Rule infrastructure, right? You don't have to own the property before you apply for the grant, because there's provisions in the grant that allow you to purchase the property after you secure grant funding. My concern, as I noted before, is oftentimes our council may move forward like we did with the purchase of seven, over seven hundred thousand dollars of land.
I've got enough of that.
And, and not be able, and not be able to...
Mrs. Lathan, thank you.
I have a first amendment, freedom of rights, constitutional right to speak, okay?
Thank you for your...
And so you cannot breach that constitutional right. You need to understand that. And so, with that, so I think the council should consider that before they make a final decision. Does that answer your question, Councilman?
Mrs. Lathan, it's your last time. Have a seat or...
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
So he got, he got a problem because you know what you're talking about. He know what you're speaking.
Well, he gonna, he can't breach my first, I have a first, a constitutional right to freedom of speech, not to you.
Please be quiet, or I'm asking you to quit.
So there's no point. In buying a piece of property that if we can't get the grant, or if the grant, if we have the property and we can't use it, it'll just be another piece of bad property?
Mrs. Lathan?
I'm not speaking to you.
You are still talking. I'm asking you to quit.
Don't focus on her.
Okay.
You gotta focus on what she's speaking, because she asked a question. So, so this property, I mean, based on what Sheila said, reading the information that Sheila gave us, it's already saying it's in, it's in a wetland, and it may be a problem.
Sheila said there was no issue.
So we tying up money?
Sheila, I talked to Sheila today, there's no issue with doing this.
I'm reading the letter Sheila sent us.
I talked to Sheila today, there's no...
I don't care, hearsay. I'm reading the letter that Sheila actually sent us. That's what I was reading from. You know, she, oh, so she changed her mind, all of a sudden saying the letter she sent is not legit.
I think she just did further research.
That's what you say.
I talked with her today, there's no problem.
Yeah, that's what you say. I, if Sheila here, to speak for herself, this is hearsay.
Okay.
Same way we threw a seven hundred thousand on one fifty-one.
Okay.
And you can't do nothing with your property.
Okay. I need a little bit of clarification. I thought that, that we have a, that the pump station was there now.
Pump station already, they've been there forever.
Right, but there is a problem that we have to...
It's pumping?
Yeah, because there's on somebody.
It has a temporary pump for the last two, three years, maybe four years.
So our main thing is about the, the pump.
See, I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't invest in the property. What I'm saying is the timing of investing in the property. Instead of us taking time last time, before we bought that property on one fifty-one, they ran out and bought it with no easements to get to the property.
Okay, I got it.
Same point here.
But...
If you apply for the grant, and, and the grant comes back, and however, he comes back and says, we can't use this property for that, then we're going to do it?
Now, but, but here's the thing. And, and this got to be, because we need the pump station.
The pump station's already there.
Yeah, but it's, there is a problem. That's my understanding, that it is a problem.
It's not working anymore. We haven't worked for years.
There's a problem.
It has a temporary pump, just like the one on Southern Pine has a temporary pump.
Okay.
Same thing.
But we, we can't, okay. And it's on property, it's not owned by the city, and that we have a, a very low offer for it to be. What, what I'm trying to get at is how are we going to lose when we need and we are going to try to keep the pump station operating in that location? Are we planning to move the location?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, then, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to see, what is the, I, I can't see the, the problem. And maybe because my focus is about, the only reason that this purchase is, is about the pump station.
I'm saying timing. I'm not saying never buy the property, I'm not saying that.
So, but the pump station need our attention now, I understand.
They still can't do nothing with it until they get the grant. You got to get the grant to do it, you don't have a grant.
Oh, okay, so, but, but we're not planning to move it, right?
At some point in time, we go have a grant, the grants go fund the project. The grants go fund the project on the property where it currently sits. You can't put a project anywhere else.
You're missing the point, move on. This is, it's not rocket science, move on.
I don't think I'm missing that point.
You're missing the point, you're missing the point.
I just, so...
And there's no evidence that we're not going to be able to use the property.
Use it for what?
Use it for a pump station.
But I'm not saying you can't use it for a pump station.
And then why are you saying not buy it when we know we need a pump station?
Because I'm saying timing. Why are we rushing to buy it now when we don't even have the grant?
For one thing, we've got it at a very low price. Demand has come down from the initial one. And it's valued, the last thing came in, it valued it at thirty-six something...
You got one appraisal, one.
Okay, but, I mean...
Why you didn't get three appraisals?
Why you pay for multiple appraisals for the same piece of property?
Why, because first of all, we should have got three to be sure that we're getting the correct appraisal.
You don't get three appraisals.
You could have got your buddy to give you that appraisal, it's insane.
You don't get three appraisals, that's a waste of city money.
Twenty-two hundred...
I am going to make a motion.
I don't care if you buy, I'm just making a point.
The twenty-two thousand dollar piece of...
You're going to waste seven hundred thousand dollars you had a point for that?
I'll second if you're done.
Thank you. Mr. McCray? Mr. Backus?
No.
Three. Mr. Seagull? Hi, Mrs. Carey? All right, new business, approval to matching grant funds for eight hundred fire and police radio chief captain. Your thanks.
Good evening, Council. A moment of time, on behalf of myself and Chief Captain, I'll, I'll speak. Make sure that you can answer any questions or tell me if I make a mistake. Last year about this time, the city put in with Senator Malloy and Representative Williams, and we were awarded some funds to purchase radios, the remaining radios that the police department needs and the fire department to go what is called P twenty-five phase two. They've been talking about this for years, and it's coming tomorrow, it's coming next week, it's coming next week, it's coming. We truly anticipate getting this next year. So the money is, is well needed, almost, almost desperately. However, the senators, Senator and Mr. Representative Williams said, look, we can give you some monies if we want the city to have a little, a little skin in the game, as the lady was saying. They awarded us and gave the city two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The quote comes in at two sixty-four, it's a change, with a difference of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eleven cent, just shy of thirty-five thousand dollars. When we put in for the monies, the city of course said, hey, we do, we do need to have a little skin in the game. We'll get the money from A R P. I come to you today on behalf of myself and the fire chiefs, asking for thirty-five, right, thirty-five thousand dollars to go along with the two hundred and thirty thousand that was given to us by Senator Malloy, the state, and Representative Williams.
There's our financial guru over here. Do we have that money?
I'm talking with Miss Gloria, she says she thought in the A R P money we had something coming. I went to her just before I talked to the mayor. And it was basically glad we got the two hundred and thirty thousand versus having to fund the whole thing ourselves.
Chief Davis, you said you talked to her today?
I was asking him if he did, if it was today. No, I talked to her a week ago when this issue came up. We thought it was going to be the whole thing, but then we found out it was a small match. We were also told that the A R P money took us and kept us free from touching general fund money. So it didn't even deal with the general fund. That's why they suggested that.
We were gathered up over here trying to figure out the funding source. If we have... If we have thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and how much?
Eleven cents.
Eleven cents available in our A R P money, I would make a motion that we spend it to get the eight hundred fire and police radios that are needed by the departments.
I'll second.
Mr. McRaven? Mr. Reed? Mr. Card? Mr. Seggers? I, Mr. Scarry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you business lead discussion of funds for community grants committee?
Council, I would like, I would like to ask council and mayor to look at approving some requests from the grants committee. It was not, the grants committee did not truly operate this year, and there were several groups that did come before us. What I'm asking today is one that has been, what they... The city of Darlington has traditionally contributed and provided donations to these, to the two organizations that I am, well, you know, quite involved with. The first one, and so I'm asking for funds was there. And that is the United Negro College Fund. Each year, their telethon or the mass vote is for throughout the P D. It is the P D that provides the scholarships to all students. It is now being moved from the traditional, okay, what we call our thirteen colleges, the black colleges, but it's any one now. Any student that is in need and throughout the P D. Because in our last, in our last effort, we had two students from Francis Marion that were able to do it along with the traditional black colleges like Benedict and...
HBCU?
Eight, eight, I couldn't come up with it. My other one, and they're asking, they're asking for two thousand five hundred dollars. And my other one is our tradition. What we hear, I felt really bad. I felt really bad that we did not find a way to provide a donation to them, and that's the Sweet Potato Festival. I really felt bad, and I would like to be able to say the same amount. I know it's post, but I'm asking you to be able to, at least the same amount to the Sweet Potato Festival.
For next year?
So I'm asking.
I think just you saying just for a donation, this is kind of a reimbursement.
Double check on that. Was that a reimbursement counted to the Sweet Potato Festival for the one that was just killed?
The one with the cell, that we didn't...
We didn't, so you wanna give them something in return?
That would not for next year. Not going forward. Then next year, I feel like we should actually, once we get our, get the city manager in and operating, that that's a committee that we could get to function properly so that, so that the request can be made online like it was, you know, through the process that we set up. But it just wasn't this year, and I'm truly wanting these, at least these two, 'cause they did make the request. Oh, I see him thinking.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. Did you talk with anybody about where the five thousand would come from?
Yes, when I spoke with Gloria, Gloria about it, it would come from hospitality. Yes. Well, see, hospitality, you know the Sweet Potato Festival brings everybody in. But that's what the big gala does, I mean, for the United Negroes, 'cause they come from all over, and we have, it is from the district, we have a celebrity that comes in to raise money. That's always from either California or Atlanta and all that kind of stuff that we have. Then it has it all set up to show that the different ones that are contributing online while the thing is going on. And traditionally, what has happened here, all of the mayors, the mayors do show hearts, the mayor set for them last year. What happens in Darlington, Mayor Boyd said, "Give the tickets to any of the employees that like to go," that kind of thing. So Lake City Marion, O'Ree, even Murda Beach, all around, they're there.
Concerned with whether we have qualified for hospitality.
If we wanted to give something, we may have to just get that out of another account, the general account or something, and then not the hospitality.
I'm not sure. One of them would go hospitality, but I'm not sure the other one would.
We could pull it from a general account or some other account if we had to, for one or two.
Yeah, 'cause I think a couple of years, I guess, the city manager just did, you know, get bored of it.
I think, yes, you said historically, the city manager had written a check in the years past. And I'm talking with Garland and Payne had done that for years past, or as an organization. I'm fine doing both or one.
Is it in budget for this year to write that check?
I'm not sure, and I think we also need to, maybe at the work session, discuss. We had talked about different times figuring out exactly what we're gonna want to fund long-term, since we bonded so much out.
Right.
But I agree with you on the Sweet Potato. I wish we would give something, even as a thousand dollars, just something. But I understand if we want to maybe allocate a certain amount of funds and amend our budget and then send it to the grants committee and ask or go through and do it as a council on these two issues, I'm open for whatever council wants to do. But I think she's right, or might be.
Yeah. I don't want us to change our tradition. I don't want Darlington to be the one that's not there.
Other cities are giving, is what you're saying?
Oh, yeah. Most, well, we're one of the lower ones. Most of them are giving big time.
Okay.
They, it's a big thing.
I'll make a motion that we make those funding, approve those funding requests for the... Sweet Potato Festival. What's the official name of that?
It's called the United Negro College Fund.
United Negro?
Scholarship Fund, let me see, I got them.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Mr. McCraven? Back to you. Mr. Card? Mr. Seggers? I, Mr. Scarry. Can I make it here as mine? Amendment to the agenda for personnel matter during executive session. It came up as I came in tonight, that these to be discussed.
You had to say it. I should say it like that.
I'll motion to approve. I'll make a motion that we add to the potential matters to be discussed, a personnel matter. I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second. Is this to amend the executive session?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Mr. McCraven? Back to you. Mr. Reed? Mr. Seggers? I, Mr. Scarry. And we want to take a session for a personnel matter and discussion of negotiation amendment to pose, retract or grievance, oppose, sell or purchase of property, the receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice relates to the pending threat or potential claim, other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, government of legal claims, or position of the public agency, and all the atmospheric situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. We may act on it as we come out, but I'll let you go into executive session.
I'll motion.
Second.
Mr. Smith? McCraven? Miss McCraven?
Before we, shall we just let our citizens know as well about, 'cause we won't have another open meeting like this. While they're here, remind them about the upcoming events in the city of Darlington, our tree lighting, when we're putting our lights up, so that they can look forward to those things and can be present. If Hunter can share those dates with citizens, so that we can get them involved and let them know that we are indeed doing things, and they need to be abreast of what's going on.
December seventh, a bunch of community organizations have come together. We're gonna host downtown Christmas festival. This is being hosted through those organizations, but the city's assisting. It's gonna have some kickoff of the Jingle All the Way Fun Run. It's gonna be Christmas parade, and then there's gonna be a big downtown party. And then the farmer's market will be going on that whole day as well, from about one to five or one to six. And then Thanksgiving week, the city is gonna light up Wells Park with a bunch of Christmas lights. So hopefully, by the weekend for Thanksgiving, everyone will be able to go out there and take pictures. And I'm gonna plan a movie night on December twentieth in Wells Park. So a lot of holiday happenings.
December the eighth is the Christmas tree lighting at five o'clock.
What time does the parade start?
Two fifteen.
The fun run starts at two, and the parade starts at two fifteen.
Two, see, before Thanksgiving, Dr. Reeves and his group give out the turkeys. They start at seven o'clock. That will be on December, I remember the twenty-sixth, Tuesday on the square, the turkey giveaway. Tell your friends about that. James, the back? Approval, go into the executive session. No, we gotta stop. Mr. Seggers? I, Mr. Scarry. We're going to the executive session. Thank you.